Good evening, everyone. I am Mayor Robinson and I'm calling this meeting to order. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city of Lake City, South Carolina. Invocation will be led by Councilwoman Scott and the pledge will be led by Mayor Protem, the co-signator. Everyone, please stand.
Let us pray. Dear God, be thankful for another day, another month. We're thankful for Thanksgiving, to give thanks to be here and to be among our city business. We pray to heaven and father, you will bless this city. Bless each and every one that's here tonight. Bless us, Lord, as we leave here. Give us a clear understanding and give us a mind to continue to work together, love one another. Blessed in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we'll have Madam Clerk, can you poll, please poll the city council members?
Mayor Yumika Robinson.
Present.
Mayor Protem Nicole Singletary.
Present.
Councilmember Wilhelmina Scott.
Present.
Councilmember William Askins. Councilmember Dewannica Cooper.
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Fleming Crosby. Councilmember Jason Brown.
Present.
Mayor Robinson, I find there to be a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
Second.
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands, please. I need a motion to approve the minutes, approval of minutes from the October 10th, 2023 mayor and council meeting.
Move to approve. Second.
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. We do not have any introductions for tonight. We will move to our presentations. And for our presentations, for the second part, Ms. McCullough will actually come a little later on the agenda for the closing documents and resolutions. The first presentation, we're doing a poll voting for LC Opportunity Board members. And the members will be added to the resolution 2023.048 to be approved later in this same meeting. Do we have either one of you to explain for the poll tonight?
You want me to explain, Mayor? Okay, what we did was we received, we reached out to the council members. We asked each council member to submit by November 1st at 12:00 PM people that they would like to see on the Lake City Opportunity Board along with a resume. Sent out a reminder, we got some of the resumes and some names after the particular ending date and time. So the only way to go about getting people elected to the board is we wanted to do a poll and to pick three, and we'll do a poll vote for that, and we'll put the five members on the board that are selected.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, council?
Amari Hooker has one. Sandra Grimsley has one. Maggie Cooper has one. Amari Hooker has one. Maddy Thomas has one. Maggie Cooper has one. Anna Franks has one. Amari Hooker has one. Maggie Cooper has one. Karon Epps has one. Amari Hooker has one. And Maggie Cooper has one. Karon Epps has one. Amari Hooker has one. Carl Alford has one. Karon Epps has one. Amari Hooker has one. And Carl Alford has one.
There has to be one tiebreaker. We have Amari Hooker for one, Maggie Cooper, Karon Epps, and Carl Alfred. We have one vote for Maddy Thomas, Sandra Grimsley, and Anna Franks.
Okay. So we need a total of five, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Repeat those names again?
The people that were selected?
Is that the top three?
The top, the top four are Armani Hooker, Karon Epps, Maggie Cooper, and Carl Alfred.
Okay, and the last, the last two?
The
Who's the tiebreaker, so I can understand?
Well, we don't know who the tiebreaker is. We have one vote for Maddy Thomas, Sandra Grimsley, and Anna Franks. There's one single vote for each one of those. The other ones are clearly winners, you know.
So we need to choose out one out of those three?
Yes, we do.
And that was Maddy Thomas?
Sandra Grimsley and Anna Franks.
Were you? Were you aware, Ms. Maddy? Were you aware? Okay. So Sandra Grimsley and?
Sandra Grimsley's and Anna Franks.
These things were submitted by the council members? Yes, ma'am, so, thank you. See, she's not. No, 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 I wasn't looking at it.
Okay, so the person that would be added on would be Anna Franks.
So once again, if you can just name all of the names, if you don't mind, as now will be added to that resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, it would be from top to bottom, Karon Epps, Anna Franks, Amari Hooker, Carl Alfred, and Maggie Cooper.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we will have public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person and no personal verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with the city clerk to council.
I happen to be new to Lake City as of July, and I'm coming from Pennsylvania, so I'm wondering why we don't recycle in this city.
Can you state your name?
Wanda Watson.
And on there, I think there's a sheet up there, if you can put that other information there. And you said, Ms. Watson, Wanda Watson. Any more comments from the public tonight?
Heavenly Father, we come in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, to say thank you. Thank you for your promises and prophecies. I pray now for our mayor and city council and all of the other city leaders here in Lake City. I pray for their health, for their families, and that as they lead this city, that they would pray and ask for wisdom and guidance through you, our Lord and Savior. I pray for unity as they move forward to bring this city together. And I pray that as we as citizens will always keep them in our prayers, a city that pray together will build together. As your words say in Psalm 133, how good and pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. My prayer are that we will dwell together here in Lake City in unity, that we will love together, we will build a city together. And I just pray, Father God, right now, for travel for some, the mayor and city council person that will be traveling this week. And God, we will never forget to give your name the glory and the honor and the praise. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
This time I remembered to sign this paper before I started speaking. I lost a couple of, at least one minute last time I was here. I'm just coming today. My name is Carolyn Harrison. I'm from 154 Emily Road. Glad to be here, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members. I'm really happy about this Lake City Opportunity Board that you guys are putting together. I'm familiar with a few of the people. Very happy for my pastor, Amari Hooker. A few other members I do know, but I'm, I don't know how you guys came about the decision. I know the council people were, I guess, asked to give a vote. But I was hoping one member would have been in your thought, and that's the real offer. Only because he's not only got to been former mayor.
He's actually is.
You didn't listen to him.
No, no. I'm listening, I was going, I was going by. I was going by.
It's Carl.
Because I was like, wait a minute, who's Carl? I mean, and I was going, and I'm My apologies. But I am so happy, because I was hoping he was going to be a part of this, because I think he has a lot of input. He's usually my person I run to anytime I need something, or I need help with anything. He helps me so dearly. So, and I'm so happy that Karen also, I'm familiar with her, but I am just ecstatic that this board is coming together. And I'm so happy, and I'm looking forward for all the possibilities that they're going to bring, and I thank you guys for putting it together and getting this thing. And I'm hoping it's going to be a great board for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any more comments from the public? Okay, gonna move on to our legislative part. Mr. William Hall, city administrator.
Good evening, Mayor and council. For your consideration, we have ordinance number 2023.011, an ordinance amending the city of Lake City Code of Ordinance, pre-treatment definitions, chapter 28, utilities, division 1, generally section 28126, by adding additional
Definitions. Failure to comply with this ordinance will, DEHAC findings could result in fines for the city of Lake City.
I need a motion to approve ordinance 2023.011. Second. It has been properly moved as second. Any questions? No questions? Is that the only explanation you had on it as well?
Yes, ma'am, but Ricky Searid, if you want any in-depth information, he'd be the best person to speak on this, because this is actually dealing with the pre-treatment for our wastewater treatment. Ricky, do you have anything you wish to add to this or La Portia?
Okay. Sorry. He's speaking, sorry.
Could y'all lighten up, Charlie?
So DEHAC is bringing continuity
So, DHEC is bringing continuity kind of across the state with these pre-treatment definitions and have deadlines to meet for it, and so that's what this, this is. Continuity across the board, across the state.
Thank you. If no other questions, all in favor, show of hands, please. Thank you. Resolutions?
Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution 2022.046, final reading. A resolution establishing approval for the acceptance of funds from USDA Rural Development Company Facilities in the amount of $50,000 for the street sweeper and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2023.046 for final reading.
Motion to approve.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions? Any explanation, more explanation, will you?
This is from the federal government. We applied for a grant of $50,000 for reimbursement for the street sweeper that we received. And I know that the federal government and COVID held up a lot of things. They're back on path, and now they've approved our application.
Ms. McCullough, would you like to add something to that?
Good afternoon. The one that you just spoke of was the street sweeper?
The street sweeper, yes ma'am, $50,000. If you could hand that to the city clerk, she will handle that for us on tomorrow morning. Thank you, ma'am. So, is there any remarks you wish to make on the street sweeper?
Well, I just got remarks.
In general, do you wish to go ahead and make those?
Yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Kiana McCullough. I'm the loan specialist with USDA, and I'm glad to be here this afternoon on behalf of the State Director, Dr. Sandra Glover, the Deputy State Director, George Hicks Jr., and the Community Facility Director, Michelle Carwell. And I'm happy to have our new area director here with us tonight to assist me. The City of Lake City has received two community facility grants. The first grant is a $50,000 towards the street sweeper. The second grant is a $50,000 towards to purchase a knuckle boom.
Knuckle boom.
Knuckle boom, I'm sorry. A knuckle boom, I'm sorry. I have emailed and have hard copies with me today with the letter of condition for this grant, along with documents that would need to be signed and sealed by Mayor Robinson and the town clerk, Marshawn. I will begin by going over the letter of condition, which basically states that each of these are two grants for the City of Lake City. The letter of condition details what we need to do and what I need back from you guys to provide the rural development to be a complete project to purchase the grants. One of the letters of conditions is satisfied and is ready for dispersal, to my knowledge, okay. The first, okay, so the street sweeper, I'm sorry, y'all, this is my first time.
That's okay.
So the street sweeper, the total project is $273,763, and the city is responsible for the applicant contribution of $223,763. For the second grant, which is the knuckle boom, the knuckle boom, um, equipment, the total project on that is the 152,74, 1,000, I'm sorry, 152,741, and the town is responsible for the 102, 7, 1, I'm sorry, y'all, I am so nervous.
Don't be.
Okay, $102,741 for this project. The City of Lake City has six months to complete this project. Is there any questions for me?
You said six months.
Six months. And if you need an extension, we will grant you an extension to purchase the two pieces of equipment.
Okay. But you need the paperwork back?
Yes ma'am.
As soon as possible.
Yes ma'am, in order to release the funds.
Proceed the process.
All right, do y'all have any other questions?
You did great. Thank you.
This is my first time. Yes, it is. It is the knuckle boom. It is. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McCullough.
So, mayor and council, your consideration, resolution 2023.046. We never voted.
That's right. So if there's no other questions, all in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, mayor and council. Mayor and council, for your consideration, the second half of her presentation was a resolution 2023.047, final reading. A resolution establishing approval for the acceptance of funds from the USDA Rural Development Company to facilities in the amount of $50,000 for the knuckle boom and all matters related thereto.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve resolution 2023.047 for final reading.
Move to approve resolution 2023.047 for final reading.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions?
What is a knuckle boom?
It's a grapple hook. It's the item that they use to pick up cherry picker limbs and debris off the side of the road and put it in the back of a truck.
So we're going to have two cherry pickers in town?
But we already own it.
So, a new knuckle boom going on that truck?
We already have one.
Oh, we already got it, okay.
This is outdated, because y'all were behind, what, two years? So, so to speak, we're now getting caught up because of COVID and lack of staff. They're now cycling our applications through the system. Just like we have the knuckle boom, we actually own the street sweeper.
Any other questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, mayor and council. Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution 2023.048, final reading. A resolution seeking approval to appoint five voting members. Do we need to read those into the record again?
We can, for the record.
K. Ron Epps, Anna Franks, Amari Hooker, Carl Leroux Alfred, and Maggie Cooper. For the board members for the Lake City Opportunity Board and all matters related thereto.
I need a motion to approve resolution 2023.048 for final reading.
Move to approve resolution 2023.048, final reading.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions? Yes, is that also including the two non-voting board members?
Who are the two non-voting members? Hold on. Go back to the sheet. Oh, and also approving the two non-voting members as Jamison M. Kerr from Artfields, and one to be determined. Do we not have that third, that second? We'll send it back over next month.
So we're going, we'll vote on them next meeting?
Because they have two hours, correct?
And these two will be non-voting?
So y'all just add their name, too?
We will bring it back, so you'll be aware of it before we even put them on the board. But they're two non-voting, and it's to keep everybody informed of which, what's happening. It, it's called communication and good customer service with the two groups.
We have one on here, but the first, the second one will be added. Any other questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
All right, and... Right, mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution 2023.049, final reading. Resolution for seeking approval for the two new members for the Greater Lake City Alliance and all matters related thereto. Robert Phillips, the Citizens Bank, and Anna Burrows, State Seven Boutique. We have to approve their board members, so these are two new board members that they're placing on the alliance board. And they're asking for the approval to have these members seated.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2023.049 for final reading.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any other questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
All right, thank you, mayor and council. Mayor and council, for your next item, page 21 in your packet, is the financial report. This is financial report through October 31st. The revenues in the general fund at 1 million 721, 16, 17% of the budget. The expenses are at 3 million 23, 20, 30% of the budget, we have overspent by 1 million 3. I will remind that our revenues run about two months behind. Our taxes have not yet started coming in, and we don't report our state revenue taxes. They're two months behind. So really, in reality, if you look at this in two months, we're running in line with everything, because we should be right at 32% of expenditures and revenues for the month, four months out. For the water fund, we have revenues of 902,000, 40% of the budget. We have expenses of 616,000, 27% of the budget, 285,000 surplus. In the sewer fund, we're 2 million 727, 70% of the budget. We have 1 million 5 in expenses, 39% of the budget. We have a surplus of 1 million 2. In the stormwater, revenues of 71,000. We have expenses of 16. We have a surplus of 54,000. In the reserve account for water, we have a year-to-date total of 24,005. In the sewer reserves, we have a year-to-date of 24,000. That's the financials for the month of October. Mayor and council, for your consideration, we have bills 1 through 10 for your review and approval.
Can you place the bills on the screen?
I should have bills.
Can you zoom me in, perhaps?
Are they able to get copies of the bills?
I'm sorry.
Are they able to get copies of the bills?
The actual bills?
Yeah. Well, like what we, like what we get, yeah. Okay, how long does it take for them to get it? If they request it tonight or tomorrow, how long does it take? Was it turnaround time? Okay, all right.
Okay, so since we cannot zoom in, I apologize. If you would like a copy, it is fine. It is public information, and you can request by city clerk. Okay, I need a motion to approve bills, items 1 through 10, for November 13th, 2023.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions? No questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and council, that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Next on the agenda, we do not have anything for executive session tonight. We will move towards our last item, which will be council member and mayor's reports. And I'd like to start tonight with council member Brown.
You still don't know me. Let me think a little while.
Okay, well, we'll come back to you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks to everyone for coming out. Again, thank you to all the veterans. Happy belated Veterans Day. I just want to say that Lake City is going to move forward. I know that a lot of things has transpired, and there's a lot of questions that y'all want to have answered. But just know that Lake City will be moving forward. And with that being said, I just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and again, stay safe and stay vigilant.
Good evening. Councilmember Cooper, you said it for me. Happy Thanksgiving to you all, and hope to see you guys next month.
Just wanted to say thank y'all for coming, and enjoy your Thanksgiving. Don't overeat. I already ate mine, so. Enjoy the holiday and be safe.
God, I want to thank everyone for coming out. It's a pleasure seeing everyone. Like Ms. Cooper said, happy Veterans Day to all the veterans, and may God bless all the soldiers that died for our freedom. And, um, we gonna, we trying to move Lake City forward in the right direction. We're going to get there, so. If anybody got any complaints in District 6, come to me and let me know, and I do my best to get what we need done. And just keep me in your prayers and keep the city in your prayers, and that's, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. Thank everyone for coming here tonight, who's in person, and thank all the ones who are on Facebook viewing and listening in. Please continue and encourage others to do the same. Happy Thanksgiving, happy Veterans Day. Want to thank all the veterans for their service and sacrifice. Want to give a special thanks to Ms. Valerie Hooker for being our, I know she's not here, but her best half is. So just let her know that we thank her for being our speaker on the day that we had our Veterans Day luncheon. We have a lot of other events coming up. The last couple of months of the year are very busy. So just to name a few, we have Hometown Holidays, which will be December 1st through the 3rd. The Christmas Parade, which will be December 1st. Operation Sleigh Bells, December 15th, and so much more. And you can find these either in the back on a flyer that you can pick up, take to your church, take to your community, or you can go on our Facebook page or website. The holiday trash pickup schedule through to the end of the year was actually placed in everybody's water bill. So please govern yourself accordingly, and that was placed as well on our Facebook page and website. So be, govern yourself accordingly with that. I have a couple of recognitions I would like to add into my report. It won't take long at all. But I would like for Mr. William Hall to please stand. I would like to recognize Mr. William Hall for the award that he was awarded just a few weeks ago for 2023 Professional Achievement Award, and that was from the Municipal Association and Municipal Finance Officers, Clerks, and Treasurers Association. I know that's a mouthful. But I was honored to be a part of that, this Professional Achievement Award. I was able to go there in Myrtle Beach and help them present this to Mr. William Hall. He has definitely showed professionalism and... He has definitely showed professionalism, and it has showed to others, um, all the work that he does. So, I really truly thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Second and last recognition I would like to do tonight in my reports is I would like to recognize myself um, for completing and graduating from the South Carolina Economic Development Institute. Um, this graduation took place in Rock Hill, um, just a couple of weeks ago, and this is a class of twenty twenty-three, and it is, consists of around sixty people around the state of South Carolina. We met four different sessions in this year. The first one, we were honored to actually, um, host it here in Lake City, and that was back in February. Then we went to Beaufort, Greer, and ended up on Rock Hill. Um, this institute serves and educate those who support and participate in economic development activities in their communities, um, providing unique and innovative development approaches for implementation in our local communities. So, I was very, very honored to be a part of that cohort class. Thank you. Um, I'm also asking everyone to please prayer, pray for, and thank you, Ms. Paula Morris, for that prayer tonight. Pray for a few of the city leaders who will be going out of town this week. Um, pretty much going to the National League City Summit Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. Once again, we're going to make sure that we get all the right connections, make new relationships, not only finding, you know, making connections with our neighboring cities and towns in the state of South Carolina, but now we're gonna be making those relationships and connections with other states. So, this is gonna be a great opportunity to put Lake, to continue to put Lake City's name out there. Last but not least, the holidays are coming up. Please be cautious, know your environment, and stay safe. But most importantly, enjoy your time with family. And with me saying that, and just keep smiling, keep being happy. Uh, we had a lot, a lot of bereavement in the City of Lake City in the past few weeks. Um, and we just need to keep all of them lifted up in prayer. So, I just ask you as your mayor to please continue to keep all of us in prayer, let's stay connected, let's stay safe, and let's continue to be happy with one another. Like all the council members said up here, most of them, we wanna see Lake City move forward, and we're work, working hard and diligently every day to make sure that happens. And the only way we can do it is not only by who you see up here. We're the leaders. We, we're the ones that you put in office, but we also need your help as well too in the community. Mr. Hall.
Can you remind the ladies or the shoppers where they put their baggage or their luggage or, or their pocketbooks in the trunks? If someone sees that happen, all they gotta do is bust the glass and pop the trunk switch on the inside of the car. They have access to the trunk.
Exactly, exactly. Even when you're going home, make sure you don't leave packages in the trunk or leaving packages in the car, cause believe it or not, people, even during the day, they don't wait tonight. They were going right into your yard and looking your cars. And some of them just look in the windows in your house when you're putting up the Christmas trees. So, just please be, you know, vigilant, please be careful, please be safe, cause we want everybody to have a happy and safe holiday time. So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Hall, for that. Can I get a motion to adjourn? It has been properly moved in second. All in favor for it? Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.